Gotta call the meeting to order. Go ahead and call the roll, Rebecca.
Toohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Ham?
Yes.
Are there any changes to the agenda, council? I have one minor change. Nothing. It was a request from our city attorney, John Morrissey, to have the first action item be put at the last action item because he had to run over to another meeting and then he'll be back. So if that's okay with you, we'll just do a little switch. Okay? Great. And now Paul's here. Okay, so let's move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the June 26, 23 council meeting. Approval of the July 7, 2023 payroll in the amount of $151,269.54. Consent of a park use permit for Climate Action Iowa, which is a noise exemption. Consent of a park use permit for Maverick Meyer, noise exemption. Consent of a park use permit for the Ministerial Association First Presbyterian Church, noise exemption. Resolution of employment in the wastewater department. Approval of liquor license for Psalm wines. Approval of special claim, this is the credit card, Wex Bank, in the amount of $3,0547.13. Approval of claims in the amount of $2,228,643.04. We had four claims, oh, for $75,000. One to Bob Brown Escavating for $151,050. USDA for $606,700. Wix Construction for $309,595.44. And Woodruff Construction for $714,770.08.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Ham. Any questions?
Yeah, I just have a question. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
A question regarding one of the noise exemptions, exemptions starting in Central Park at 8:30 a.m. And I'm just wondering if there's any way, I know that I brought this up before, just because I've had some complaints from people living around Central Park, and see if there's any way that we could request that maybe they get the music going a little bit later than 8:30. I don't know if...
Yeah, I think, I think we have a representative and maybe he can speak to that issue.
Thank you.
Reverend Joe Phipps, First Presbyterian Church. We requested 8:30 to 11:30 in order to set up. The actual service doesn't begin until 9:30.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can we have just what project each of the claims over 75 were for?
Bob, Escavating was for the deconstruction of the DOT site.
USDA?
USDA.
Highway 1?
Wakes Water. You want me to go?
Yeah. Melanie, do you know off the top of your head?
Yeah, so that is actually step two. When we closed it out, our loan was for more than what we ended up spending. By the time we closed it out, so they gave us the remaining of the loan and we turned around and paid it back to them.
Okay. And Wix?
Highway 1. Woodruff is the lift station.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry about that. I usually try to write that note down. I forgot to do that.
All right, so I reviewed all the claims. I found everything to be in order, so I recommend approval.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes, but I need to abstain from the minutes from June 26.
Toohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna move down to our second action item, consideration of, oh wait, sorry, yes, public form and appearances. First is John Miller. Is John here?
I am.
Oh, there you are. You're hiding behind there.
Right.
And this has to do with gardens and fencing.
So this first will reflects 45 people that signed a petition regarding the garden fencing that I circulate. And this is photos of several gardens to give an example of what I'm addressing. And these are letters for each of you that you may read at your leisure. I'll also read it right now.
Okay. John, if you can, you know, keep it to about three minutes, three, four minutes.
So this, in order to do this, I need to be critical of the current policy. Recently, I encountered an article in the May 25 Ledger about the new garden and fencing ordinance. Although I first heard, there had been public comments encouraged. Mr. Toohill clarified that there were not any comments received. He then explained that no public comments period was required for the law. However, the public was welcome to speak at three prior council meetings addressing this. How many citizens knew of these meetings? Not very many, probably. Mr. Toohill explained that council agendas are visible in advance on the city website, but neither he nor I could find it when I did a laptop search under his guidance for that. I would encourage you to consider adding a broader posting of council notices in public places, especially for gardens, using the Fairfield Garden Coalition on Facebook would be probably the best source. If we had seen the notice, I'm sure that many of us would have strongly objected. Food is obviously an essential to life. Placement of gardens therefore should be considered a right and not a privilege. Mr. Gandy informed me that we can request a variance, but that costs about $250. And if all of my petitioners were to sign that variance, it would be in the range of $8,000 or $9,000 expense. Mr. Gandy also stated that the use of pallets for enclosing soil and leaves and so forth would not be acceptable. Pallets are not addressed in ordinance 1224. We use pallet enclosures in several backyard locations on our property. They're very neatly placed, and I do not think that they should be an issue. In conversation with Mr. Toohill about this ordinance on June 1, he said it probably does not apply to your situation, nor should it be applied to the others gathered here. If the issue is of something like using tires for fencing, then I, which I think was a triggering issue, that should be addressed and not what we are doing. Mr. Toohill also said that council researched many other cities and patterned this ordinance after what they were doing. He seemed pleased to report that. It simply appears to me to go like legislative overreach. So input was sought from many other cities, but not from the constituents here in Fairfield. I think that's a serious problem. As the old cliche goes, beauty is in the eye of the beholder and not in the eye of someone living in distant cities. Each of us assembled here this evening has created a garden according to our own appreciation of beauty. I've looked at many other gardens in town, 45 to be specific, and I do not see cause for concern as reflected in this ordinance. If ugliness is the issue, please examine the photos that I am circulating there. And remember that I was here a couple of years ago to address the F U C K Biden flag at a property. And I was told by your legal counsel that that could not be removed by the force of the council. My concern is that if that kind of thing is okay, then surely a multicolored fence or someone who wants to put a logo on their fence or something.
John, can I clarify, is your issue the garden or the fencing?
Go.
Because my understanding, the garden in where you have yours placed, like in the front yard, is okay.
It's not okay if it's over a three-foot-high fence?
No, I'm talking about just the garden.
Right.
Right? So my understanding there, there was a lot of discussion of garden in the front yard, and my understanding based on Rebecca's, that you can have a garden in the front yard. It is the fencing that has become an issue. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if we could stick to just the fence issue?
The fence issue is that it has to be limited to three feet. You cannot keep a deer out of a garden with a three-foot fence, okay? Number two, the regulation specifies that the fencing needs to be, if it's a roll-up fencing, it needs to be inside of another fence. You can't just have a roll-up fencing in your front yard that is enclosing a garden. Okay? So those are two issues with the fencing. So what I'm asking for is that roll-up fencing standing alone be permitted in the front yard gardens, number one. Number two, that fencing be permitted higher than three feet. I would suggest six or seven feet. Number three, that fencing, if someone chooses what they call bright or fluorescent colors, should be permitted. One of my signees on the petition said, what's going to happen next? Is the house color going to be an issue as far as coloring?
Well, let's not go there because that's not what we're talking about.
So, and finally, the fourth one is the quotation from the ordinance that copy, pictures, images, lettering, logos, graphics, or artwork are not permitted. I don't care about that, frankly, but some people do. And if someone has a graphic or something they want to put on a fence, I don't see any garden in town where that is an issue. So why are we making it an issue? I don't think we need to. Okay? So I encourage you to allow others to share concerns who are gathered here, if you have time.
So Doug, why don't you ask your question or your comment, please?
The restriction on gardening in the front yard is vegetable gardening. Is that right?
Right.
Excuse me, I'm not asking you.
No, you can have a vegetable garden in the front yard. You can't have it in the right of way.
Right. Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
And I think as far as painting and all that stuff, my understanding of that fence ordinance is you can put it on the inside to your yard, you just can't put it out on the outside where it's, you know, much more public, if you will, for other people that might find it offensive.
Yeah, I think there's a distinction between perimeter fences and internal fencing. Plus, our ordinance allows for temporary fencing, too, that can be used during the summer months as long as it's taken down, even if it's rolled. That's my understanding. And we had an ordinance prior to this, too. This is not new. Some of the materials that the ordinance limits are new. I recognize that.
The committee that worked on this, which committee was that? Did that go through property? Do you want to relook at his suggestions? Just his four suggestions? He has four suggestions? And relook at that in the fence ordinance, see if there's anything you want to take up?
I want to point out, too, that a lot of this will be taken in the spirit of the law, not the actual letter. I mean, the bright-colored roll-up fencing is to eliminate people from using snow fence as their front yard fence. I mean, that's the intent of that. If you have a green roll-up fence, that's a temporary fence around a garden, if it looks good, they're not going to come after you. It's to eliminate tires and snow fencing and pallets used as fencing and trailers used as fencing in the front yard. And you can't list every single thing individually because you're going to miss 100 things. So it's the spirit of the intent of the law is that they want it to look good. They don't want people using garbage as a fence. So, you know, trash cans screwed together is not a fence. And snow fence is not an acceptable front yard fence in the middle of the summer. But that is brightly colored, rolled-up fencing is what it is. So it's the spirit of what this is supposed to be. They, it's not going to go into effect until, I think, I believe, four years. They're not going to come after people. And it's grandfathered in.
Yeah, if your fence is currently in compliance with our previous ordinance, then it's grandfathered in until 2027.
Yep. And they're not, there's not going to be a hunt going after people that have a nice-looking garden or fence in their front yard. So it's the intent of what this is supposed to be.
I would encourage some of you to visit our home at 106 West Fillmore and look at what we've done with two enclosures with pallets. I think they're very tasteful. I don't see any reason why they should be an issue.
And that's garden within there? In your pallets?
One contains soil, one contains leaves, one contains compost.
Can you give that address again?
106 West Fillmore.
The playground is in his backyard.
Right.
Obie Nelson.
That Obie Nelson?
Yes. Yep.
It's a brown ranch.
Yep.
Do you have time to let others share?
Uh, no. No, we don't. So...
So, Mr. Miller, let me ask you a question, if I can ask you a question.
Yes.
Do you understand that your current gardening fence is out of compliance with this ordinance as it's written?
I do.
All right. So obviously, a key component of us drafting an ordinance, discussing an ordinance, is notice to the public.
Right.
And so you didn't make the point that we had provided notice on several occasions and had the reading a few times?
But nobody knew. Nobody knew.
People did know.
Tell me who, how many?
Maybe you didn't know.
Two, three?
But I don't know. I'm not taking a survey.
Did any of you know that are here now?
Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller. Maybe you didn't know, and maybe there's some people here who didn't know, but the notice was given according to the law that we're required to, the law that we're required to follow.
I understand.
Now, tonight, you do know, may I finish?
Yeah.
Tonight, you do know, you're making your comment, and we're happy to listen to you. You've asked for permission to speak for the council, and as per the council rules, you're given the opportunity to speak, which you have done, and you've provided the material, which we appreciate. And as Chair of the Property Committee, we'll certainly consider your concerns at this point that you've made tonight at our property meeting. And we invite you, we're inviting those who are interested, when the notice of the property meeting is made properly, to attend and voice your concerns and we'll proceed accordingly.
That'd be wonderful. How will we hear about that? Because like I say, the method of notification does not seem to be working.
Well, I think we have a website, City of Fairfield, and you can check that website. It will tell you or post what meetings are forthcoming in the given week.
Mr. Toohill and I couldn't find it when we looked.
In fairness, I, you know, I was in my car driving, and I did not have a computer in front of me.
Okay.
So I was trying to direct you on how to find it.
Right.
So if you couldn't find it, it wasn't that it wasn't there. So...
Where I looked.
So let's just make a point. It is the public's responsibility to find and look on the city's website, and our legal place of post is the Southeast Iowa Union. And so you have to, you have to take some initiative, you know, because we can't write personal letters to everybody that says we're going to talk about such and such an issue. So I know it's frustrating from, maybe from your end, but also I just have to reiterate, it's got to be your responsibility. That's what makes this work.
Well, there's ways of doing it that would be much easier, I think. If you have twice a year a notice that goes out to all the citizens, and if you added one sentence or two sentences, there is a meeting to address revision of the garden.
Well, we don't necessarily know that twice a year, you know?
You can always...
Things come up, and then a meeting is, and an issue is addressed. So we might not know every six months that that issue's going to come up in a month. So...
That's why we give notice.
Yeah.
That's why you have three readings. But like I said, if you have concerns, you'll get notice of the meeting. It will be posted on the website, which I, if you can't, couldn't find it at that time, Mr. Toohill was in the car talking to him on the phone, suspect you could sit down with someone, they could show it to you, and then you're up to attend the property meeting.
All right, may I sit down with you, Mr. Gandy?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Our newspaper guy isn't here back there, is he? He's not back there. I say the other thing is, I mean, the newspaper and the newspaper also has a Facebook page and a website. So, I mean, I understand websites aren't easy to navigate, and, you know, as easy as it would be to post it on 20 different Facebook pages, it's just as easy to go out to either the newspaper or the city website. So I wish I, he was here so I could tell you how to find on the website. I don't know, I don't take the paper anymore, so I don't know. But I do know that they do get notices and publish them.
If you go to the cityoffairfieldiowa.com, that front landing page, and there's a calendar over the right-hand side, you can see our city council meeting. You can click on that, it'll show the agenda. It'll also show the committee meetings, such as there's a Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting this evening. You can click on that, it'll also show the agenda there.
Good, thank you.
But you should realize, it's, what's the minimum requirement, 24 hours? So a meeting, we're talking about scheduling a meeting for Thursday, tonight. So that notice may not come out until tomorrow for Thursday morning meeting. So you may only have a 24-hour window where you will see notice.
You think that's reasonable? That sounds unreasonable to me.
We have things that have to be addressed that quickly.
We can't sit there and wait for everybody to find, how much time would you want to have? Six months? A month?
Well, I told you what I would like, but you say you can't do it, so...
No, there's issues that come up. So...
It's not practical.
If, yeah, if you want to be involved, you should be checking it every day. I mean, really and truly.
Really and truly, if I have an issue with...
I think if somebody wants to be that involved, they will be checking it regularly.
Do you think that anybody would do that in town here? Check every day to see what new garden policy may be in place?
Well, I'm not talking about new garden, I'm talking about general, what meetings are coming up.
At any policy. And there are, I can verifiably say there are a lot of people in this town that do check it regularly. Because there will be certain meetings coming up, and this room will be packed because of that notice. So...
At least check on council, like the Friday before council weeks, maybe? It's every other, well, the second and fourth Mondays. If not ever, I mean, obviously, those type things will, those three readings that the fence ordinance went through?
Right.
Were listed there, and that's only twice a month. I mean, we meet twice a month, so maybe check those days.
And those committee meetings will come to the council, so you'll be able to see them.
So this meeting that was mentioned to address this, that will be on this same website, then, or what?
Yes.
Yeah, any of our committee meetings are on the website.
And if you watch the YouTube channel and watch the council meeting, then you'll see the motion, we're going to make in a minute, to refer this to property. So then you'll know that that's been referred to a committee, and there will be a meeting to address it. We won't schedule the meeting tonight, they'll have to schedule it. But you'll be aware that a particular issue is being referred to committee. But you have to watch the YouTube meetings, watch the council meetings to find out what's going on.
City of Fairfield council meetings on YouTube.
They're all published on YouTube.
Yes. Okay, so let's, is somebody willing to make a motion to move this to property committee?
I'll make the motion to move these four items that were brought up in the letter to the property committee for reconsideration.
There's five, actually. There's a fifth one after the number.
I will second. Okay, thank you. Is, are there any discussion?
We're in the middle of a motion right now. Just, what's the fifth one you're talking about? I see four listed.
Yeah, and then right below it is a fifth one about pallets.
Sorry?
You said there's a fifth one about pallets.
Oh, it just doesn't have any words.
Finally, yeah.
And Melanie wants to say something about pallets. Go ahead, Melanie.
Sure. So Weston is watching from home and texted me, said that we do have a different code related to compost containers. So I don't know what that is off the top of my head, but that may not, that may be something that's already in place and had nothing to do with this new development. And I do have another statement I'd like to make after your motion.
Were you going to say something, Rebecca?
I was just going to say that's in the nuisance chapter 967, 68.
68.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All those in favor of moving it to property committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, so it will be moved to the property committee. Go ahead, Mel.
For general public and the people listening and here today, I wanted to point out that the newspaper article regarding this issue had some incorrect facts. They were using the original third reading, not the revised third reading. So I spent a lot of time talking with people on the Facebook group about that correction. So just make sure that, I mean, if you are looking at it, it's the one with the red markups. And so the newspaper article does not match what was actually passed.
Okay.
So I wanted to get that out there to everyone.
Great, thank you. Okay, so next up is Sharon Stenical of the Mad Hatters. She's requesting a beer garnet at Petrus Park request. So Sharon, if you can keep your remarks to three minutes, we would really appreciate it.
Three minutes. About two years ago, I met a guy named Jesse, and we had planned to have a benefit tournament for him on the 29th of July. He is, he had cancer. Friday, he died. And we're turning it into a celebration of life. So I have a feeling it's going to be a pretty big amount of people coming in. The tournament starts at noon on Saturday. So what I wanted to do is maybe section part of the, part of the park off, use only one entrance to it that's right next to the pool hall, and let people flow over into that, into that area. I have a feeling that people will want to have beverages with them out there. We're also going to extend part of, part of the tournament, it's called a survivor tournament. We're going to do a couple of outside games. We'll probably use the park for that. So I was hoping that you guys would be okay with me doing that. I've already applied for a special one-day liquor license from the state.
This is on the 15th?
The 29th. 29th of July.
29th of July, from noon until how late?
Excuse me, could you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you're kind of interrupting here. So if you wouldn't mind going out in the lobby and discussing, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
They usually, the pool tournaments themselves usually go until about 10 at night.
So you'd want to have unrestricted use of alcohol beverages from the doorway on the street, or sidewalk around to the park?
Well, not on the street. They probably would walk from the door right around.
Yeah, they'd carry the alcohol from the door to them.
Yeah, probably.
Are you right next door to Petrus? Like, your door is the only entrance between the park and, okay.
And no fencing or fencing? You're talking about fencing?
I mean, I could go out and get some brightly colored.
I mean, normally, isn't there a double-brow fence?
I think we've voiced fenced-off beer gardens in the past.
Chief Thomas could speak to the rules about beer gardens. I think there isn't a state law that specifies how they have to be.
It's actually changed. State laws become a lot more tolerant. We used it our last couple of RagBri, where it didn't have to be fenced off. And then even more with COVID, where there's less open container enforcement. So now state law doesn't require any fencing. They're just responsible to make sure juveniles don't drink the alcohol.
How do we restrict people from drifting across the street or walking down the street without a fence?
Public intoxication.
Yeah, it's the same as the bar. If they step out in public or cause any problems actually inside, anywhere, as long as it's public access, we can enforce public intoxication laws.
Do you plan to provide receptacles at the park for trash?
Garbage cans, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll only have cans out there, no bottles.
No glass bottles?
Yeah.
I'm just suggesting a fence would inhibit people from walking off the property with alcohol, that's all.
Well, you have to be able to get out of a fence.
Well, there'd be a door, but, or a gate.
It's kind of already like that, though. If you look at the front of how unmained street that, you know what I'm saying?
I'm not against it, I'm just thinking of...
You just want a brightly colored fence.
I don't think we have the state to back us that we can expect our officers to enforce it, though.
I just thought there was still fence, fence kind of law. Apparently not. All right.
I would make a motion to approve the request for use of Petrus Park on July 29?
Yes.
From...
Probably like noon until 10 at night.
From noon until 10:00 PM for the memorial, no, celebration of life slash memorial event.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. I wanted to, will it be music and stuff out there or not?
Probably not.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
Unless you're coming to entertain.
There will not be music.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, that motion passed.
Thank you.
Stuart Valentine, is he here tonight?
Haven't seen him.
Don't not see him. So I'll try to get him to come next time, he may have just forgotten. He, he did go to this conference up in Toronto about this March 21. We do know that we didn't make the top seven. But he was going to come and tell us about the conference and, so I'll try to schedule him again next, next meeting. So we'll just move on. Oh, no, no.
Excuse me, you said we did make the top seven?
We did not.
We did not.
We did not, okay, thank you.
No, we did not. Okay, so now we'll go down to the action items. First action item, consideration of traffic control device application with Iowa Department of Transportation for the intersection of Second and Broadway.
Um, so the year anniversary of shutting off the lights at Second and Broadway are upon us. So we're working to get that project finalized. Joe and his crews are hoping to remove, or I'm going to put in a permit for them to remove those the last week of July and the first week of August, sometime in that time period. They hope to bring the masks down. What this application then is for, is for one of the stop here for pedestrian signs to be placed on the north side of the intersection. I went back and forth on which side of the intersection to put that on. But actually, the north side had more pedestrian users on the two times that we counted traffic, as well as it actually had more users during the peak time of the evening as well. So although the south side, the post office gets a lot of noon traffic, overall, the north side has more. So that's where we recommend putting one, and then we'll see if there's a need for another one. It will be exactly the same as the one that is on Burlington. And because this is a state highway, they are recommending, requiring that it be removed during the winter months. So I believe the application says, May 1st through October 30th, it would be up. So both Burlington and this one would come up and go down around the same time and be handled by our street department. The other thing DOT wanted me to tell you is that this is solely our traffic device and if it gets run over or destroyed, that it is our cost to replace it. And I said, understood.
So this is every year you're talking about putting it up?
In perpetuity.
We would put it up and take it back down every year, but knock on wood, the one on Burlington did very well in its first year, it's on its second year, and, I mean.
Do you think comparable traffic between those two roads?
It, you know, it doesn't have as much truck traffic, but honestly, you know, it's not necessarily the trucks that we're worried about. It's everyday users who forget that it's there. And so I, I think taking it down in the wintertime is going to be the best thing for it. You know, the snowplows and things like that aren't destroying it, but.
Motion to approve request for traffic control device application.
Second.
Okay, moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy, any questions or suggestions?
Yes, yes, Melanie, so the idea is to take it down in the wintertime? Is that going to create or make any additional hazard?
There would not be the warning there, that there are the pedestrians, and I guess I don't have a solution at this time. We do still hope to apply for a grant to do the active, push-button activated signals at that, pedestrian signals at that intersection. But this gives us a, a start so that, you know, we can go ahead and take everything down, but yet still have something most of the time. There's no, like, there's no divot or anything where the post is standing.
So this is a movement in the direction of, of stop signage removed during the wintertime with the idea that perhaps there may be something at some later date that we'll use in the wintertime, in the winter?
Yep, that is still my, my hope that, to some pedestrian improvements at that intersection.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a first and second. I guess, no other questions or comments, call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
And the next one is the authorization to the removal of the street light?
Nope, that is a different intersection.
This is, oh, okay.
So the next two items are actually related to the roundabout. And on the lighting plan, there is a picture of the proposed lighting for the intersection. We've been working with Alliant on getting the right height and spread of the poles to, or of the light fixtures to have it properly lit. So the first item is for removal of an existing street light that is at that intersection. It's not necessarily in conflict of the other one, but it would be more than what's needed. And so it would be one less light that we have to pay for by removing that one when the other ones go up. And so then the second one is for approval of fourteen poles, some with anchors and some without. What we are proposing is paying a higher upfront cost, giving our monthly rent on each of those poles being less. It pays for itself in about five years, so we are not, for everyone, this is notice for everyone, we are not replacing them with fancier poles in five years, at least until we've paid it off. It's a reminder for myself as well. But that's how, we will, these will be wooden poles, breakaway poles, DOT approved at the intersection. And so I need council's approval to remove the one light and add fourteen back in.
There's a street light there now.
More of a security light?
Okay.
But yes.
Yeah, drive by there at night more often, I guess.
Yeah.
So because we don't have the map behind us, it's, where is it currently? On the north?
Again, I got to turn myself in the right direction.
Yeah, face north.
It's on the Casey's corner.
Northwest corner.
Yes.
Northwest, okay. So first you want to remove that?
Um, they're really, they're going to happen at the same time, but the first motion is to remove them and then the second is to add the.
Not remove the pole, just remove the light.
Remove the light.
And then we're adding fourteen poles with lights?
Yes.
Just all over?
Well, in the pink dots.
Pink dots, okay.
So there's about two on every corner of the roundabout and then one at the approach of the roundabout.
Gotcha, okay.
Can you clarify for me, we're going to own the poles?
Yes.
So we're paying, paying for the poles and then in five years you think they might need to be replaced?
No, 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 in five years, they will be.
Paid for them.
The higher upfront cost will be paid off, the rate of return. So we will still be paying a rent, but we will have the initial paid off, basically. At that time, if we wanted to replace them with prettier lights, that's more what I was saying.
So Alliant's going to put the poles in and they just charge us for them?
Yes, so actually, all of our aerial lighting, so extra lighting at Chautauqua, the, I think we have some extra lighting out of the soccer fields. If they do not have transmission wires on them, we pay a rent on that pole. It's at a higher price than just the other poles that have streetlights on them. So these, these fourteen do not have a purpose other than to put light on the roundabout. So that's why we get charged a higher rent than a, one of the downtown, well, the downtown, downtown's not a good example, but like along Burlington.
Alliant's not getting any use out of it.
Alliant's not getting any use out of it.
I'm just curious, because unrelated but to a separate issue, what are we paying for rent for a pole?
So the ones at Chautauqua were like seventeen or twenty dollars apiece. And I assume that agreement was made a very long time ago because the monthly charge per pole, even the cheaper monthly cost per pole is going to be a hundred and twenty-eight dollars per month.
The reason I'm asking is because if someone were to come in and want to put up 5G and pay rent, it'd be on that order of magnitude.
Okay.
Because people suggested, well, just bill them $2,000 a month and they won't want to do it, but that's not legal, I don't think.
So we're just talking about streetlights, though, right?
Yes, yes, street lighting, surface lighting for the roundabout only, nothing else going north of the roundabout. And I, I mean, so this is required as roundabouts, part of roundabouts. We did not include it in the roundabout construction because of timing of everything and ultimately we own these. And so it was, it just needed to be done separately.
So I'll make the motion to allow the removal of the light at the intersection of Libertyville Road and Highway 1, Northwest Corner.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Esti, any discussion on removal of the street light? Not, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, now is the implementation of the new streetlight plan.
I'll make the motion to authorize the placement of fourteen new streetlights, according to the plan outlined in the agenda.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Esti, any discussion? Not, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
The next item was a public hearing and resolution relating to annexation of the Walton Park addition. That is not ready to go, we're still waiting on information, so I need you to table it again.
Motion to table.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy, any discussion? Not, please call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
And then motion to table the resolution as well?
Second. Yes, well.
Well, you did, you can't table a public hearing.
Right, that's what we were doing.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Sorry, I wasn't very clear on that. Yeah, we don't need to have the public hearing, we just needed to table a resolution, sorry. So let's go to ordinance 1226. This is a franchise agreement with ITC, I will public, open a public hearing in case somebody wants to speak on that. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and this is the second reading of this franchise agreement.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Esti?
Second.
Move to a third and final reading, excuse me.
Moved by To Hill, I believe, yes?
Second.
Oh, yes, is that what I said? No, it's not what I said, second by To Hill. Okay, any discussion? Not, please call the roll. Esti?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, then we will move to ordinance 1225, this is the third and final reading, ordinance naming the street Chautauqua Drive.
Still moved?
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy, any discussion? Not, please call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move back up, hoping that, we were hoping that John would be back for the action item, consideration of letter of understanding for legal services. Doug, do you want to talk about this?
Well, Ways and Means Met a few weeks ago and recommended that the city adjust the retainer fee to the city, for the city attorney from 3,800 to 4,275, I think it is.
Forty-three seventy-five.
Forty-three seventy-five. That retainer amount had been fairly constant the last six or eight years, with slight variations one or two years, but it's about 3,800 the last three years. So we thought this amount of increase, fifteen percent, in one year would be satisfactory to make up for the loss of increases that weren't exercised in the last five years. So then we also recommended to council that we pay up to a maximum of 2,250 dollars for an intern that Morrissey Law would want to hire, may already have hired, I believe. And the reason for the additional costs and work is, we're doing a lot more ordinance enforcement now, we hadn't been the last few years. So there's more work for the attorney's office to do for the city. And then if he, I know the question was raised about writing a separate agreement for the intern. If Morrissey Law had decided to change that intern's title or position at the law firm from an intern position to, say, an associate partner of some kind, then he would bring forth a separate agreement that would cover her, her duties. So if you, I don't know if you read the agreement or not, but it's broken down into two parts. Basically, anything that the city engages in that's up to and including magistrate court level of attention is covered by the existing retainer agreement. But special, special issues such as district court issues or personnel issues are set aside and they, they will be billed at a higher rate depending on the issue at hand. So we don't have a rate for that particular duty because it's not predictable. But anything through magistrate court, then he'll do under his retainer fee of 4,375. Any questions?
I guess I just have one clarifying question, though, this is just allowing him to hire an intern and that we will cover the cost of that intern or assistant.
Half portion of the cost, a portion.
Portion, excuse me, half of that, the 2,250.
It's fifty percent of what he dissipates, being the full cost.
Got it.
And John had told us a couple of times that he estimated that they would each put in twenty to twenty-five hours a month on duties to the city. So they're not clocking it, it doesn't sound like, but he's estimated it's around twenty to twenty-five hours for each of them.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion to?
Yeah, I'd make the motion to approve this letter of understanding.
Second.
Okay, moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy, any questions? Not, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Under the mayor's report, I thought I was going to have a board appointment, but it will, I think, likely happen next meeting. That's for the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center. But I do want to make the appointment of City Fairfield Health Physician, Dr. Trent. And I had spoke to him last year and I, I think we just missed officially appointing him and there's been no action that he needed. And, and we were close to an action this time and realized we couldn't find it in our minutes. So I talked to him and I want to make sure that we get him officially appointed.
What is the role of the Fairfield, City Fairfield Health Physician?
So sometimes during some type of inspection, you know, a rental inspection, we might find a house or a building that is not in living conditions appropriately, there's, how do I want to say? How do you, how do you want to say that, Melanie? It's a, it's a public health issue.
Yeah.
Public health issue, that's the word I was looking for, I don't know, it says it right there practically. Yeah, so what happens is he either is, he's given notice and either provided pictures and said, yes, that is an issue for public health and we can then have that place shut down, or he can actually go out there, do you want to add to that?
Well, and so the last time that we used this was a situation where rental property had raw sewage on the ground. And we generally don't shut people's water off for unsanitary conditions. But with the previous health official physicians, not blessing, but backing, assistance, determined, we all agreed that it was in the public's best interest to remove the tenant from that property and then shut the water off to keep there from continuing to be raw sewage on the ground that may affect the neighborhood. Or, you know, kids and puddles, that's about the only thing I can say, is my kids would be attracted to it. And so the Cochran was the previous health physician and he had come out and inspected that property with Weston at the time.
I have a question.
And he has retired, so.
Does the county have a doctor?
Well, they have a county sanitarian.
Yes.
Mr. Dan Miller.
So doesn't they, doesn't that person have authority over City Fairfield?
Not for health, living conditions, I don't believe.
Public health does.
They don't have a doctor, they have nurses.
Right, so they have a, I'm just curious, but it seems to me, we're in the county, so, you know, we would be under their authority. No one knows.
No, I, I, the, our code calls for a specific physician, doesn't mean that our code couldn't be changed.
Okay.
To utilize that, but our code does call for a specific physician, so.
Okay.
Okay, so I'd take a motion to approve Dr. Trent?
Second, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
By Flornoy, second by To Hill, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, thank you. City Attorney Report, and of course, Mr. Morrissey isn't back yet, so let's move him to last. Committee and Board Reports, Public Safety and Transportation.
All right, Public Safety met this evening at 5:30, we had a full agenda, lots of stuff to bring before you guys. So we recently hired an outside firm to do an assessment of our police department and we, it's. And we, it's brought to my attention that we never officially adopted the command structure that was recommended to us in that study. So Public Safety met tonight and would recommend to council that we adopt the proposed command structure of a chief, one lieutenant, three sergeants, and ten officers, as recommended in that police study that was done. So I would make a motion that we adopt the new command structure as presented in the study by John Thomas.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, just to inform council, the idea is that we adopt a command structure and through attrition and through promotion, eventually the command structure will fit the actual personnel distribution of the police department. It's not yet there, but over time, we expect it to be.
Yeah, sorry.
There won't be any motions of lieutenants right now.
There will be no movement right now, so I think that, well, depending on the comings and goings, I think the first is an expected retirement within eighteen months. And that'll move us towards our new command structure.
You want to repeat that command structure for the public one more time?
It is a chief, one lieutenant, three sergeants, and ten officers, where we did have a captain, three lieutenants, and one sergeant.
Great.
And then the officers.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Did we go with what you needed?
We did.
Oh, we got one and two. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, unanimous.
All right, so the next item on our agenda was to discuss our current animal ordinance with a specific request of the committee to consider putting a limit on the number of animals or types of animals. And upon further discussion within the committee, we are going to ask that the Animal Control Board come together, review the ordinance, make suggestions, bring it back to public safety for review, and then depending on their input, possibly bring it back to council. So no action on that this evening. The next thing is council had referred to public safety, consideration of an engine and compression brake ordinance. Mr. Morrissey presented us with one, I can't tell you from what town this is, but the committee did read through it, and our recommendation is to implement the engine and compression brake ordinance that was presented to committee this evening. If you want me to read it, I can. It's just two really quick statements.
Just put it on the next agenda.
Okay, put it on the next agenda. He will have the ordinance written up. So our recommendation to council is that we do put in a place an engine and compression brake ordinance, which I will make a motion for Mr. Morrissey to write up a new ordinance for that.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, and Candy seconded to bring that to next meetings.
Yep.
Next council meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
And just so you guys know, it will be an ordinance. We will have to put up signs. Mr. Morrissey was pretty sure Iowa Prison probably has an existing engine brake sign. And then for finding purposes, it will fall under the vehicle noise ordinance that the city already has. So next thing we had was a request, and I don't have a pretty picture, but a request for a parklet variation. I'm not going to get the streets right. Mel, you may as well come up here. So we have a request to put forth, or to allow a variance for parking parklet that is at what corner?
Southwest corner of Broadway and B.
Yep, for the old Armory. And it's breaking the current ordinance by, in two different ways. So first, our current ordinance reads you can't have a parklet in the first parking stall at a corner. And the drawing does have that, plus it goes into a little triangle that's there that anywhere else in the square would be a garden node, but at that corner, it's just triangled off. And then it does exceed the width by seven foot, which is actually, that's after we've asked him to reduce it already. So, but based on the drawing, based on the business that's going in there, we feel like it is worth bringing the council to approve the variance request. And so our recommendation to council is to approve the variance, allowing the parklet to go in the first parking stall and triangle, exceed the width by seven feet with, for one year, with an option to renew with this variance for up to five years. So he doesn't have to come back year over year and ask for the same thing over and over.
So it's simply taking up one parking spot, and the extra seven feet is going into the triangled-off area?
Two parking spots.
Two parking spots.
Two parking spots.
And the triangled-off area. Oh, and that, that one year with renew up to five is from date of completed installation. So he's not, so we aren't going through all this only to have it completed next spring.
Is it seasonal?
Yeah, our current ordinance is seasonal. It comes out during the winter.
Yeah, it met, and he planned on meeting all of the other requirements as far as making it removable and the height of the fence and all of that kind of stuff. It was just these two things that he did not meet. And I will, the other thing I'll add is the, on the corners, generally I would not recommend that if it was not a four-way stop. So if there is another intersection that requests this, you know, I would personally look at each intersection individually.
Do you think the fact, too, that that's on a one-way street maybe also impacts the safety of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, what I read is officially a motion by me to allow the variance.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to allow that variance for the parklet. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay.
The last item on our agenda tonight was the restriping of Burlington Avenue, which continues to come up year over year. So we were looking at resurfacing Burlington in the next, like, five to eight years. And because of the cost of materials, we're probably looking.
Of other projects.
Yeah, of other projects, sorry. We're probably looking at closer to ten years. And so for lack of better words, a stopgap would be to restripe slash re-tape, paint and tape Burlington and not, you know, not take the time right now to try to allow for those bike lanes because with repainting, re-taping, we still have the grinding that's gone in underneath the current tape. So if we wanted to try to adjust the lines right now, we'd have a painted or taped line, a grinding line, and then we feel like it would not be in the public's best interest to do that because of confusion. So we have actually tabled this topic. We'd like to have pictures and a little more information on what it's going to look like underneath the current taping so we can see those grinding lines to determine if it is in the best interest to re-tape or consider bike lanes at this time.
When you say grinding line, do you mean like the mistake they made at Fourth and Burlington?
Exactly like that. But that's what we're saying is that if we re-tape right now and we want to allow for the bike lanes, we have to bring the car lanes in a little bit. So you'll have a tape or a paint line, then you'll have a grind line, and then you'll have where the bikes are. And not only the bikes, but the cars all have to determine which line are they following. And so we just want to see this a little closer and do a little more analysis on it before we make a final decision not to move forward with bike lanes at this time.
And this will make for an official bike lane?
No, we're thinking we won't do that.
At this time.
At this time.
If we would.
At resurfacing.
At resurfacing, but that would be another motion.
But we have no recommendation to the council at this point other than to do further.
Does bike lane move on one side?
There were multiple things discussed when it was, when we talked about moving it.
French Riddicker gave us a recommendation, and it wasn't for bike lanes on both sides because of safety. So we're going to revisit this with pictures and more info.
And honestly, I didn't look into the different options that were presented because my recommendation was to just tape where it is, but we're going to look into it some more and I'll bring more back to the committee.
And that's all we had. So I'm sorry, when would this new taping be done?
So the new taping would begin, hopefully we could still get it done yet this construction season before temperatures get cooler. There is a supply issue with the tape.
And paint, right?
And paint as well. And so it depends on how quickly a motion gets made. The goal, again, the goal would be to get some of the highly traveled portions done sooner rather than later. And I'll talk with Joe about his schedule and bring that information to the committee as well.
Yeah, Public Safety will reconvene when we have more details.
Right, and the concern to notice, council, at least my understanding is the concern is there's quite a bit of interest in having bike lanes. And so we have to understand the decision, if we're going to make the decision, recommendation to the council, we're going to, what's the word, put out in future possibly a bike lanes for anywhere from eight to ten years with the decision not to tape over the grind, I believe it's called. So that's a fairly significant decision. We just want to make sure.
That's all we had. No motion, no action. Yeah, okay. And that's all you have. Okay. Administrator, I know. Mr. Morrissey is still not here, so he has one more chance. Okay, administrative department reports. Who wants to go first? Melanie doesn't have anything. Nothing from the city engineer.
Just our city administrator. Very good. And the last time we spoke, we had some conversation about the new flooring at the rec center that they had put in, and there was a considerable amount of black residue and discoloration to that flooring, and people were concerned. We are under, after doing some research, we are under the assumption it's not mold. I did go in there myself, and yeah, it's, there's not a whole lot of ventilation. It's very stagnant, very humid. And after talking with the park director, that they did struggle putting that material in there based on a lot of different factors. Also with those temperatures that we had discussed, that zinc, copper, magnesium, I noticed that in the women's locker room versus the men's locker room, there was a, men tend to use less lotions and creams and different kinds of product. And so there's less discoloration on the men's side than there is on the women's side. So we're discussing on how that's going to get fixed and maybe we change the color because that's going to happen. The park director, and I agree with the park director, has asked the contractor to come back in and repair, make those repairs after the swimming season. So you're required to go through those locker rooms to go out to the aquatics facility. And so we'll wait until the season is over for them to come in and make those repairs so there's less traffic. And that's where we're at with that, so we're going to continue to work that problem, but we continue to have the discussions. The next thing we've been discussing is we have goose problems at our swim beach, and I don't believe that's ever going to go away. I can tell you that over a period of years, I've tried goose mitigation. This is a problem in many cities. And really, there's not a whole lot that you can do to make the geese not become naturalized. They find a home, they decide they're going to stay, and they're not leaving, and they're going to do as they please. Sometimes they're not very nice. The city has placed rakes out on the swim beach where there seems to be the largest problem. Geese like sand, and they'll nest, and they can become very agitated, and they're going to do what they want. But we do not have the park staff, these rakes that we've placed out for asking the public for help to rake off the goose droppings off of the sand is the best solution that we have for now. There's some other things that we'll try, but we, as the city, do not have the staff to go out there and rake and clean up after these geese day in, day out during the summer seasons. But that's when they seem to be the biggest problem because people are wanting to swim. So we're going to try some other things. I've asked the park director to put out signs that ask the citizens for this help, even though the rakes are there, and hopefully that will help mitigate the issues that they're having. We've had discussions regarding an emergency action plan. There's been a generic action plan that has been adopted, and we are going to start building on that action plan to where, no matter what happens in the city, whether it be a natural disaster or some sort of terrorist attack or whatever it may be, that we will have a plan in place. Not only will the city know what to do as employees, but also as the citizens. We're going to start with our first tabletop. We've been working with the police department, emergency management, and city staff to create our first scenario. And we'll have our first tabletop, talking about all the things that we have, the tools we have in place. And then we'll build on that. And then once we get the first tabletop done, then we'll build on the next one, whether it be an earthquake, whether it be a fire, whether it be a tornado, what have you. We need to know where all of our resources at, who to talk to, who to call. And no matter what happens to anyone, we'll be able to open up a book and be able to go straight down the line and have a call tree. And working with emergency services will, should be successful over time, so that's really important to us. The last thing that we were working on, and we're still in those discussions, is the topic of the brush pile and compost site. We recently have had a storm, so that site's getting full. And eventually, I would assume that that brush pile's been there for years, if not decades. I don't know if decades is the right phrase.
I'm not sure. At least a decade.
Wow.
Don't you think?
But we're working on some alternative solutions to where we can accommodate not only the citizens to where they can do, you know, they can pick up the compost and the mulch, what have you. And we can still dispose of, you know, like, these big storm events. And that's going to be a work in progress because there's going to be some logistics involved in how we accomplish that big pile, so that's where we're at for now.
Great, thank you. Okay, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Moved by Tohill?
Second.
Second by Esti. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, meeting adjourned. Thank you for your time.